We'll call the meeting to order. We have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey.
I pray, holy Father, we thank you for this state that you allowed us to see. We thank you for rest on last night. We thank you, Lord God, for those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for their family members. Pray for those who serve others. Lord, we thank you for your greatness and we thank you for your life through your son, Jesus Christ. Lord, we ask that you give us direction today to do those things that are beneficial to those we serve. In the name of Christ our Father. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Okay, counsel, we need to approve the minutes of the June 7th, 2022 Redler City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Is there any one in the audience like to comment on that meeting? Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Hi, counsel, we need to approve today's agenda.
So moved. So.
Anyone in the audience like to comment on today's agenda? Counsel, any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, today we're going to have a public hearing. Phyllis, you want to read that?
Public hearing for public input on reapportionment map two for the Bossier City Council districts. This is just for any comments on the actual map two.
So we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone like to come up to the mic and talk?
Good afternoon, council president, council members, Mr. Mayor. Lee A. Jeter, Senior 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. I'm going to read all of my questions because I have several with regards to the proposed map and then I will give each of the council members and the mayor a copy of my questions. Under the new proposed Plan Three, it appears that three of the five districts would decrease in minority black population. That dilutes the voter strength of the minority black population in those three districts. Have you prepared a plan that does not decrease the percentage of minority or black voters' population in the three districts? And if so, when can the public view the plan and that proposed map? What is your retrospective plan? Since the minority black population would decrease in the proposed plan in most of the new districts, would that open, would that plan open up the questions by the Justice Department as a regressive plan? Under the old plan and the new proposed plan, District One, where I live, has considerably more population than any other district. This dilutes the votes of all of the population of District One, not just the minority population. Why would we leave District One so much larger than the other districts? And what can be done to bring the size of District One closer to the other districts? Can we see an interactive plan? And when I say interactive plan, what I'm saying, a map side by side of the current proposal and the other proposed plan. And can we move the districts line to, for District Three, to include all of Sun City and Savannah Place? And what would that look like if we moved those lines? And what chance would that make to the overall population? And would that make District One and District Three more in balance? Were there other plans presented by Mr. Jerner to this council other than the one that the public had, has had an opportunity to view? And if there are other plans, shouldn't the voters have an opportunity to review those plans and select from one of those options? And did Mr. Jerner prepare any other plans and maps for the council to review that have not been presented to the public for their review? If we're able to have a, hypothetically, if we're able to look at a map or interactive map and move lines, say, from this street to that street and to be able to see in real time, side by side, what that would look like, I think the public would have a better idea of how their voting strength is going to change as well as how their district is going to change because we know some voters are going to be in different district. Thank you very much, counsel. I'm going to give this to Ms. Phyllis and she can present it.
Well, you might need to stay there. Where's Gary at over here?
Okay.
Because he's going to have to answer some of those questions. You might read the first. You want to start from the beginning? You read them all.
Yes, sir, I did because I wanted to respect the three-minute limit. Thank you.
Well, just, just stay there, Mr. Lee.
Okay. Under the proposed-
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm going to do better than that.
There you go.
I think it would be better to look at these and then respond to Mr. Jeter individually for every, every point.
Thanks, you're a full of points.
For like, for Thursday, Gary, you talking about?
I'm lucky, really.
Huh?
Thank you, Mr. Jeter. Some of them are very easy to answer.
Thank you, Lee.
I'm going to need some-
Thank you.
Hey, Lee, I think Mr. Jerner said he could respond to a couple of them and then-
At least.
Yeah, a couple of them at least right now.
There weren't any other maps that were presented to the council.
Thursday, we have another public hearing.
There were no other maps that were presented to the council. That, we can answer that one right off. The, the maps that you have were the, the Plan Seven, which they decided not to go with, and then this map two, and that was the one that they decided to go with. So that's what's being presented.
Right. And as far as retrogressive, you can only work with the population that you have. And so the, we did, I did an examination of all minority census blocks in the city and was able to show where those districts are. I do not believe that it is retrogressive at all. You can't use the current plan to show how the changes are because the population variation is so huge in part of the city. So the, the plan that submitted, the Plan Two, is an attempt to bring all of those populations into sync and also to address not only total population but eighteen plus. So you, as I've, I've said before, it's not registered voters, but it is voter age population map.
According to the numbers I'm looking at, Mr. Jerner, it looks like District Three, Four, and Five is going to decrease in minority participation in those districts. And, and, but you're saying that's not a retrogressive plan?
I don't believe it's retrogressive because we have to be able, and it's up on the screen behind you. You have to be able to look at each district's population within plus or minus five percent, which it does. All the Hispanic population is accounted for. All non-Hispanic, white, black, and others are accounted for. And so you just have to be able to balance them and that's what this plan does. But I'll be able to, you do have something, talking about putting Sun City and Savannah Place in. I'll need to get engineering data from the city and look at the boundaries of what those neighborhoods are. Because if you don't have defined neighborhoods, you can't find the edges to them. So I, the best way to do that is to simply look at, there's two ways to do it. One is what the city says the edges are and the other is to look at what people believe to be their edges. And in Bossier, we do that by subdivisions typically. But if you've got something that you want to show me where, you know, you, you think that the Sun City boundary is in Savannah Place, I'd like to see them. We could simply come here and, and draw the edges in and then I'll do the demographics on them and see how that works.
Okay, because we, we submitted a plan back in February to this council. It wasn't a five district plan. It was a seven district plan.
There's a huge difference between the two.
Right. But also, when we're looking at the numbers, it just appears that if we simplify this for the voters and just look at the majority white population and just group all of the other minorities, when you're looking at the maps and you're trying to go through all of this data that you've given us, it can be confusing and, and you've got to kind of decipher it. We need to kind of put this in a position for the average voter, in my opinion, that the average voter can understand it. So it's less looking at the minority population and group all of the other minor, minority population together and just have those two sets of statistical data instead of having all these breakdowns because it's confusing. And, and when you're trying to make sure the numbers are accurate, it's very, very confusing.
We take those numbers down to six decimal places within the census. And so, I mean, that's just the way that it's done. I'll be happy to, to simplify it. Once you start simplifying those numbers, you end up rounding them. Every time you round, I've got, I'm looking at another parish for potential suit. If someone did that and it leaves the political body vulnerable. And so I, I much prefer to have exacting numbers. But I do understand what you're saying.
The only other thing I would ask for the benefit of the voters, if, if we could put the current maps side by side, the current map and the proposed maps, so the voters would be able to see. Because obviously, some voters that may be in one district are going to be in a completely different district. And it's very difficult, even when I print it out on an eleven-by-nineteen sheet, to see where the boundary lines are drawn. But I believe the voters need that. I would appreciate having that information.
I can check with engineering to see if they can do that for you, but I'm Office of One and so that's, you know, that's maybe a little bit above my pay grade to be able to put two by two and, and put it out there, so.
That can be done with a PowerPoint slide, just put them side by side. But you won't be able to zoom very well, but that certainly would be done.
So, I'm getting here, Lee, you'll be back Thursday for the meeting and what have you done? Or do you want to meet with him?
Do our best.
Or do you want to meet with him when you get him done?
Well, I, I'd really like to sit down with you and whoever else, probably here, and let's look at your definitions of the neighborhood boundaries. I think that's the most important thing. And not just those two, but, but any others that you feel need to be shown.
Okay. And those two were singled out by me just because of the number that was in District One, which has the highest number of voters in the entire city and then District Three.
I understand.
Okay.
Happy to.
Leader, Phyllis, you have Lee's phone number?
I do not.
See, I'll have to set up something.
It's not a public record, everybody has it. Three-one-eight, two-three-zero, five-six-seven-eight.
Got it.
Start getting print calls, that's this guy.
Oh, that's easy to remember. I get a lot of those already.
Yeah, don't we all?
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other comments about the, the plan? One more chance. So we'll close the public hearing. Does any council member have any comments? I'm sorry. Hi, counsel.
Ceremonial matters, recognition of guest, Claire Woods, Director of Environmental Justice Policies and Programs and Senior Attorney to give an update on cleanup of environmental contamination related to the former Trinox Kerr McGee Wood Treating Facility.
Good afternoon, council members. Good afternoon, Mayor Chandler. It's good to see all of you. Thank you for having me here today. I saw many of you in February at the February City Council meeting where we shared information about the project that we're working on over on Hamilton Road. And I'm going to ask for Mrs., Ms. McGraw's assistance pulling up our slides so I can walk you through a few updates about the construction project. This relates to the former Trinox Kerr McGee Wood Treating Facility, which is on either side of Hamilton Road, on the west side, bordering Green Street and on the east side. And so if we could go to the next slide, please. And we're going to, I'm just going to give a quick site overview, talk about the ongoing work that's, that's going on near the site, talk about our community engagement efforts, and then we can leave a few minutes for some discussion. Next slide, please. So the site location, I talked a little bit about this already, but it's on Hamilton, on either side of Hamilton Street. You can see here that the former Trinox Kerr McGee site is outlined in yellow. There's a west property and a east property. And then there are two other superfund sites in Bossier City that are important to know about. In the north, the Lincoln Creosote superfund site. And then down below in pink, the Highway seventy-one, seventy-two superfund site. Next slide, please. So I'll give a little background about the wood treating operations. The, the facility operated from nineteen thirty to nineteen eighty-seven. It was operated by TJ Moss, Tyco, and a number of other companies, including Kerr McGee. Kerr McGee purchased the property in nineteen eighty and operated it through its decommissioning in nineteen eighty-eight. The, like I said, there's a main property that's about twenty-six acres and a west property that's about six acres. The west property is the property that's on the west side of Hamilton Road. And it's being remediated or cleaned up under recap, which is the Louisiana State Environmental Regulation that sets the cleanup standards for our work. There are different contaminants of concern here. The onsite contaminants are creosote, benzene, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. Offsite, we have contamination as well. And I'll talk a little bit about how that got there, but it's, doesn't include creosote. So the more concentrated contamination is onsite and offsite, we have polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. So you can see, this is a historical area, aerial of the operations of the site. And you can see the west property on the left side of the screen. It was understood that the west property was mainly used for storage of clean wood. Later, we, we, we had that understanding from Kerr McGee's historical documents, but we later discovered based on some sampling data that in fact, there is contamination on the west property as well. On the east property, you can see the area on the right side of the image where there's kind of a concentration of orange lines. Those were the drip tracks. So they would treat wood in that area and allow the, the process wastewater to, you know, the process wastewater would drip off of the treated wood. And you can see, if you can scroll down a little bit, Ms. McGraw, oh, no, sorry, up. Yeah, you can see a little bit further. You can see the green line that goes from that process area that I described, north. That was a stormwater ditch. And the operators of this facility used that ditch, an unlined ditch, to allow their processed wastewater, contaminated processed wastewater, to flow offsite in unlined ditches, north and then to the east, to where the railroad tracks are now. There was that green dotted line and there were also a couple of other ditches. There's a purple line and some blue lines. Those are all representative of historical ditches that were used to offload processed wastewater. At the time, there were no buildings constructed on this area where most of the ditches were. But if we could go to the next slide, you can see that the ditches were at the end of the, when they stopped using the stormwater ditches in the late nineteen sixties, they filled the ditches and graded the area and built public housing on top of the contaminated property. And you can see here from nineteen sixty-one, the aerial with no housing in the yellow circle. And in nineteen sixty-nine, you can see Scott Dickerson Homes, which is currently operated, owned and operated by the Bossier, the Housing Authority of Bossier City, was being constructed. Next slide, please. So last time I was here in February, we were getting ready to do excavation work to address the contamination offsite. And we prioritize that offsite contamination because of the risk, the potential risk to residents living in the area north of the site. So we're focused on this area right where the stormwater ditches were located before the housing was built. We actually had a site tour this morning, a site visit this morning, where we walked around with residents and looked at the excavation process and talked about the steps that we're taking to mitigate the impacts on residents. And I want to be clear, this is a massive project. There's a lot of workers out there and residents are impacted. We're doing our best to minimize those impacts. We have a number of precautions in place, but this is affecting people's lives. And we're moving as quickly and as safely as we can to continue the progress here. We're going down to two feet below ground surface in some areas and five feet below ground surface in other areas. And that's all dependent on the sampling data that we have from the site investigation. We have a number of plans in place. They're all listed on the screen and many of them are on our website. Health and safety plan, an excavation plan, a utilities identification plan, dust and odor control, air monitoring, all to make sure that we're doing this work safely and that residents are protected during the course of the work. All of the plans are based on industry standards and, and like I said, and not just industry standards, but feedback from residents and the specific circumstances of the, the work that needs to be done at this, at this property. So just a little bit about health and safety. You can see based on this photo, this is a, a photo that was taken a couple months ago at the Housing Authority property. The fenced area was put up and the work, this is before the work began, the work was happening, is happening right next to residents' homes. The purpose of the health and safety plan is to protect the residents during the course of the work and identify potential risks. We communicate with residents as much as we can. We have three message boards on site and we're constantly updating the message boards with information about what's happening. We update the air monitoring data from the site. We have seven different air monitoring locations and we update that data every single day that there's work going on. So they'll be able to go to the message board and see what the air monitoring data said for the day before. We also have noise controls. We do spotters for all of our truck traffic. We have site security. We do have a local Bossier City business running the site security at the site. We have had a lot of difficulty with utilities during this project. We didn't have any, the Housing Authority didn't have any as-bills for utilities. So we went through great lengths to try to identify the utilities in advance. We did have a utility strike. It was a, a clay line that was not being used and we were able to patch it that same day. And because of that, we ended up bringing out a camera crew to look through the sewer lines and, and identify the location so we could try to do our best to avoid future utility strikes. Next slide. This is some information about the air monitoring. Like I said, we have seven air monitoring stations around the work area. We do offer one-on-run, one-on-one review of the air monitoring data with residents if they're, if they requested. And we have had residents request that type of engagement. Let's, and for the worker's safety, in the beginning of the work, for the first few weeks, the workers wore personal air monitoring equipment to make sure that the levels were safe. Next slide, please. So just a little bit more about air monitoring. You can see the red locations on the map are the fixed locations for, the squares are real-time air monitoring. So those, that's data that comes in immediately. The, the blue triangles are adjustable locations. So we move those locations depending on where the excavation work is ongoing. So this map that you're seeing right here is from Friday. That's where the air monitoring stations were on Friday. And then in addition to the real-time data, we also have data that's validated by the lab and those are in the, denoted with the yellow, sorry, the red circles. Next slide, please. So dust and odor is expected during work like this. We are sequencing the work to minimize the number of open excavation areas at any one time. We're also spraying odor control on areas that, where we are observing odors and we take, our contractors take copious notes about observance of odors and that, that information actually accompanies the air monitoring data that the residents receive. Next slide, please. So you can see the work here is, in the photo, you can see an example of the, the trucking operation. We use smaller hauling vehicles onsite just because there are families, there are kids in the area. We, we don't want to have those big trucks in there. The area is really tight for working. So we use the smaller trucks, take the material that we're excavating, bring it to the site, which is just down Dickerson Street, offload it there and put it into bigger trucks. All of our trucks are tarped. All of the trucks with, with contaminated material that's coming out of the site or the property are, are tarped to minimize the risk that material could leave the trucks. We have spotters and we always do equipment decontamination to prevent any contamination from being tracked onto the roadways and into the community. And the excavated material, I think there was a question last time I was here about what landfill we were going to be using. The, the material is taken to the Republic Services Webster Parish landfill. Next slide. And then this last image is just a, an image of the trucking, the hauling route that we built onsite. We, we wanted to avoid using Green Street just because of the impact to residents and also, you know, potential wear and tear on city roads. So instead of using Green Street, we built this haul road on the, our site so that the bigger trucks could go straight to Hamilton Road and down to I-20. So I think that was my last slide. Oh, I have a couple slides on community engagement. Let's, yeah, so we've done a lot of outreach to the community. We have all sorts of materials, flyers, fact sheets, door hangers. We do newspaper advertisements. We have a community survey. We maintain a website and we usually do press releases for our, for our meetings to get residents to come out. With all this, it's really difficult to engage the people who are directly impacted by this work. We do do door-to-door canvassing, but it's difficult. People have really busy lives and dealing with this type of issue isn't front of mind for anyone. We are at the suggestion of members of NAACP, Bossier City and Parish Chapter. We are bringing on a community, a part-time community liaison. The application deadline for that position is closing tomorrow and we've received a lot of really great candidates. We're hoping that that person can help us connect with residents who are affected and get feedback and implement their suggestions and recommendations. And this is just a few photos from our community events and meetings. We've, since August of twenty twenty-one, we've held a number of meetings. The first two were virtual, but we've been here in person since then in October, in January, and in April. We are planning additional meetings later this year focused on redevelopment planning, which is a big opportunity for the residents to help identify reuses for the main site area that would be beneficial to the community. So that leads us to this slide. The reuse, we, like I said, we prioritized the, the environmental work offsite, but there's also environmental work that needs to be done onsite, on the property. But once that work is done, there's an opportunity for redevelopment. And that's what we do at the trust. We prepare sites for beneficial reuse. And we really take a holistic approach to working with the local government and community members to identify a use that people actually want. And we're about to enter into that phase of kind of- And we're about to enter into that phase of kind of trying to understand what's needed and what's wanted. Our community survey is a good place to weigh in for residents who want to submit ideas for, for the future of the site. And it is important to remember that the future use will be, depend on the level of cleanup that can be achieved, and that is still being investigated and will be ultimately approved by Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. Let's see. I think that's what I had to share with you all today. I know that was a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer questions. I'm so glad to be here today and share information with you. We want to engage all of you as much as possible. If any of you want to come out to the site and come look at the work that's being done or meet with residents, we would be happy to facilitate those types of meetings or events.
When y'all haul it off and put it on Dickerson Street, I think you said?
Say that again.
When you haul off from one side, put it on Dickerson Street till you can load it up again and take it to the dump?
Yes.
Y'all cover that, or?
Yes. Yeah, and I have my experts here with me, but, for the technical questions, but yes, they, it gets covered, I think, on a daily basis in the evenings when the, at the end of the workday.
There she is, I see her now.
I, I got two questions for you. One, I know you, I know, I see Murphy Brothers is down there doing y'all's hauling out for y'all. I take it it is a different trucks bringing the fresh dirt in, so there's no cross-contamination coming back in?
We have, we have different sort, like, there's a source area for the backfill that's coming back, back in, and we have two types of soil material that's coming back in. We have backfill coming in and then topsoil that's coming in, and my understanding is those are completely separate, you know, subcontractors.
What's y'all's timeframe? When, when do you think this project will be wrapped up?
So, and originally, we planned for February through August, and we're still in the August timeframe. We're running about two to three weeks behind, but we're still hoping to get it done in August. We, we're, there are some areas on the property that are now completely backfilled, and we're now just waiting for the topsoil to come in. There are two basketball courts on the property, and one of them, we're completely rebuilding, and we're expecting that to be done in early July. We're hoping that it'll be finished.
At the end of Scott Street?
Yeah, one of them is kind of on the south corner of the Scott Dickerson Homes property, and the other one's on the north corner. We're hoping those will be done in.
So that'll, that'll be a brand-new court down there when y'all?
Brand-new court on the south property, and we're hoping that will be done early July, hopefully in time for Fourth of July weekend. On the north court, we're resurfacing the existing court and putting in new posts. So both courts will be really nice areas for kids to, to have for, for recreation.
Do you know Mr. Jeter? Have you, have you talked to Mr. Jeter? Okay.
We've been working together a lot, and we really appreciate the NAACP's support and guidance and all of the work they do to help us reach residents, absolutely.
Great, fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Claire? Thank you, Claire.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, and please reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Unfinished business?
Adoption ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas Chandler to execute the attached revised evacuation host agreement with the City of Bojor City and the Northwest Louisiana Veterans Home. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience on this? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adoption ordinance to appropriate $586,512 from the sales tax capital improvement fund to purchase police vehicles. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adoption ordinance to appropriate additional funds for improvements to the Bojor Arts Council Building for a total of $200,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a list of improvement yet that are going to take place for the $200,000?
Why don't y'all both come?
We currently do not have an extended detailed list. Part of that money will go to fund the original scope of the project and any additional waterproofing efforts. We believe the roof really needs to be looked at and rehabbed in order to prevent the work that's being done now having to redo it in the future. And that was developed and discovered during the bidding process with some, with some of the contractors that were bidding, that we found some of these additional areas, and that was why we're asking for the additional funds.
So the, the original $500,000 that was appropriated for this, is that $500,000 gone?
This will be an additional, it's not gone yet. We have not entered into a contract with the contractor yet. We were trying to get the additional funds so we can get the full amount. I believe that $500,000 was for design, construction, testing, whole, whole nine yards, and this would be so we can do the original waterproofing efforts, which were around the original building, and then to do any additional waterproofing efforts on the, nor, near the roof lines.
Yeah, the, the original $500,000, if I'm, if I remember correctly, and it was before I, before I took office, that was for brickwork, re-bricking the whole entire building?
It was brick cladding and water, and some minor waterproofing. Yes, sir.
Well, so will this $200,000, I mean, we don't have a complete scope of work yet. I mean, is this $200,000? I know it's a, you know, it's a historical building down there, and it needs to be taken care of. My concern is, I mean, will this $200,000 cover what y'all are trying to do down there?
Based on the discussions with the design team and the contractor, the $200,000 will cover the additional work that we believe is needed. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Hold on one second. Council, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, is yours up?
No, mine didn't pop up. Y'all may have turned me off.
Well, that's how it should be there.
There we go.
Motion carries. Adoption ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached memorandum of understanding between the State of Louisiana, Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation and Tourism, the Bojor Parish Police Jury, the Caddo Parish Commission, the City of Shreveport, and the City of Bojor City. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from, from the audience on this? Questions from the council?
Mr. President, I would like to address, one of the things I think would be advantageous to the city, I would like to see where those other entities be involved, and if they fail to commit, then the City of Bojor also do not commit. So I don't know if I need to do an amendment to this MOU or, or just get the mayor to put that as part of the MOU from his office. Which, which one, Mr. Attorney?
I think they've already all signed, haven't they?
Well, I, I mean, even in the future, if someone decides to reneg on their obligation to be a part of this, then we also forego our commitment as, as a municipality.
I think that language would have to be added to the document itself, to, to the memorandum of understanding to the actual contract.
Okay.
That if any entity which has executed the agreement either fails to execute the agreement or in the future fails to live up to their responsibilities or breaches their obligations, then that would give the option to Bojor City to also withdraw.
Right.
That would need to be an amendment to the ordinance then? Mr. Jacobs?
We, we can barely hear, we can barely hear you, Phyllis.
I said, would that need to be an amendment to that ordinance then?
Well, I think it, I, I think the ordinance as is, it's fine. I think that what we would have to do would be just to let me add the language to the, to the, to the contract or the document itself, and then if it's time-sensitive, we can put it on the agenda for Thursday if we have a quorum present and vote on it then, or we can just wait to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think we should delay the, the final, because this is a final reading here, so I think we should delay that for another, what's the next, the fifth of July?
The fifth would be the next meeting.
Yeah, July 5th. I'm sorry, I did not realize this was the final reading.
I make the motion to, I don't know if delayed, I guess to the date of July 5th, this ordinance.
Charles, do we, I'm gonna say it, not saying it too ugly. Shreveport and Caddo's gonna take, take care of their side. Bojor and the police jury's gonna take care of our side. Is that, is that how you say it? And I understand what Mr. Darby's saying.
The language is vague, somewhat vague. It basically states that all the entities would work together to basically fulfill those obligations as spelled out in the document for the entire, you know, and everybody would supply either personnel, indoor funds, you know, basically to, to fulfill the obligations as specified for this park. But I, I would remind the council that I, I believe it's contingent upon, if I'm not mistaken, this project or this bridge and surrounding land to be taken into the state park system.
Yeah, if you don't, I mean, as, as written in this MOU, I mean, we're, we're talking about providing adequate number of trash can, receptacles, liners, emptying some garbage, and other little maintenance around there. I would, I would ask that this council, that this project, this new four-lane bridge that is in such dire need for everybody in Caddo Parish, Shreveport, Bojor Parish, Bojor City, that we get a new four-lane bridge that will help drastically both parishes and both cities growth, I think, for everyone, once a new four-lane bridge is constructed in South Bojor, that, in my eyes, picking up some, emptying some garbage cans and stuff like that, it, it does not seem like a, a big undertaking for the city for us to do that if it means getting a new $150 million four-lane bridge. And if, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I, I really think the longer that we hold up signing this is, the money is there right now, but the money can be gone in the blink of an eye. And we've worked, you know, years, 12 years, I know, that, almost 14 years, I know, that before I was even here, that we were fighting for this in South Bojor, that we so need a four-lane bridge down there. So I, I would ask this council to really take that under advisement and let this move forward.
Mr. Jacobs, by passing this today, we're not actually signing a contract or an agreement or, we're just saying this is our understanding of what it's going to be like moving forward. If you take it into the state park system, this is what we're willing to do.
Correct.
And this isn't a formal contract that we're binding the city to.
It, it is not. It is a proposed agreement in principle, and I would again caution the mayor and the council that this DOTD has not approved this particular agreement. The biggest, you know, we have all the, basically, this is.
We have more to worry about than this trash with the, with the conference call we had with Sean Wilson.
Right. This, this is the, this is the city, the parish, Shreveport, Caddo Parish saying, this is what we're willing to do in order to get a four-lane bridge. And however, it has to pass DOT, DOTD muster.
And just briefly, when we were, when, when we had a conference call with Secretary Wilson, we asked him kind of what his hard deadline was, and his answer to us was the day after session, which has now been two weeks. So by further delaying this, it, it only pushes everything back. Is, is that correct?
But we got, we still have questions about property down there that they, they want us to buy and take and build this and that, you know, which we basically said, hell no, you know, we're not gonna do that. I mean.
There's, I see what you're saying about this.
But basically, when, if I sign it, this don't, still don't, doesn't go into effect for 10 days afterwards, right?
You can't even sign it until?
Yeah, 10 days, yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
10 days after publication in the official journal.
Right, that's what, I'm sorry, I'm backwards.
You know, the, there, there's, history speaks about lots of things, and some, some members of the council has not been here as long as other members, and we, we've had endeavors with other entities in the city, and those other entities do not always keep their word. So this city council cannot afford to go by what if, we need to have it in writing, that their obligation is locked in as well as our obligation. Going forward, things change, the administration might change, the elected officials might change. We have to cover the citizens that we represent by making sure that we don't obligate ourselves to something that we're the only one on the hook. Everybody need to have a, a dog in the hunt. So that's why it's so important to make sure we have it in writing. And to delay it to the fifth is, I mean, that's just a few days from here, and, and I just think that's real critical going forward. The city has never owned a bridge, and here we are becoming custodian of a bridge eventually because we're, we're on the line here. Not that I have anything against that, it's just that I want to make sure that our liability is not the only liability that's covered. Everybody needs to be liable for something like this, this project. So that's, that's why I suggest that the attorney do the due diligence and get this in writing. Make sure it's there. Make sure that, make sure it's in the fine print. Don't, don't leave it out.
Phyllis, will, will we have to introduce it Thursday?
If it's not something that we're adding to the ordinance itself, I mean.
Are we still in discussion on this?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I don't think it's, to my understanding, that we're gonna own the Jimmy Davis Bridge. If this is there, that is still in the consideration after the bill that was just passed, I think, by Senator Peacock, that the state park can take something, can make something a state park that is less than 250.1 acres, I believe is what they require for a state park. So I think this is basically saying that the City of Bojor is showing good faith, Shreveport, Bojor Parish, and Caddo Parish moving forward, that if it is to, it does become a state park, the state still owns the bridge. And I believe in that bill that was passed, that they cannot make a city, and, and, and I, I know Lisa's waiting to get up here, that she's got some more info on this, but I think that's, that is basically just from the, the discussions that I've been in on and the phone calls, that, that this is just a, you know, it's, it's good business on our end moving forward, showing that we will, if comes down to it, empty some garbage cans and stuff like that for what they, what they were asking for. But I do understand what, what Mr. Darby is saying also. I, I just, I just hate to look down the road in that we've missed an opportunity that I don't think that we will ever see the money ever again for a four-lane bridge in North Louisiana.
Did they ever figure that out, Brian, about the acreage in Woods Park and giving it to Lieutenant Governor? Was that all, ever worked?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is all, that is all still, that is all still moving forward, and I'm not going to speak on that. I think when, when we let audience talk about this, I think that is, that is all still moving forward. I think that was one of the whole reasons that Senator Peacock did his bill, and it was passed so that the Lieutenant Governor could. And it was passed so that the lieutenant governor could take that in as a, um, as a state, as a state park.
Mister President, um, I know Ms. Johnson has been working on this pretty diligently. Can we get her up here to, uh, comment on it?
Very quickly before Ms. Johnson comments, it's my information that the governor has not signed Senator Peacock's bill. It is still sitting on its desk.
Okay, Lisa?
Okay.
I know you're biting at the teeth.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mister President, on your last day of this year.
Hey, I gotta meet in Thursday, okay?
Okay. So, uh, Lisa Johnson, President of the Bossier Chamber of Commerce. Yes, I have been behind the scenes as other folks have. Um, uh, Mister Jacobs, you're absolutely correct. The governor has not signed House Bill seven, uh, sixty-two as of, or six, seven, seven sixty-two as of yet. I look at it every single day. I'm, since he had his, in veto land right now and doing all that, I'm hoping that it's just gonna go on through and that it'll sign. You are absolutely correct, Mister Hammond. Uh, Senator Peacock amended that bill. And there was a lot of discussion on the Senate floor to exempt Caddo and Bossier parishes, uh, from, um, the two hundred and fifty acreage minimum to four hundred acreage for something to be a state park for this bridge to become a state park, if we get to that, uh, point. So we're waiting on the governor's signature for that. I spoke to Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungesser last week, face to face, because it was our final meeting of our little task force that I was a member of. And went and spoke to him about, uh, this and told him where we were, uh, getting the signatures from all four municipalities and that we're waiting for today's ordinance. And, um, and he said, I'm ready to accept it, I'm ready to sign it and move forward. So this is, this request came from the lieutenant governor saying that if he took the bridge on as a state park, that the municipalities would work together to pick up trash. I'm the one that spoke to him directly on the telephone when he told me that. I would assume all liabilities and everything, and can the local folks help pick up trash? We can't pick up trash for a half bridge and a half bridge. My understa- that's, that's because we don't wanna half trashy bridge and a half clean bridge.
Shreveport's half trashy bridge.
I understand that, sir. But I think my understanding is that what we were looking at is that one quarter would be a year, one municipality, the second quarter would be another one, et cetera. We're still several years away from that point. Um, as I have said repeatedly, um, when I have the opportunity to speak about this, the eye on the prize has been, the terminology I've used, is a four-lane bridge. And to get that four-lane bridge built, we know what the secretary, uh, Secretary Wilson has said to us, that the bridge is not gonna be torn down. And because they have shared with the federal government that it is a usable bridge, can be refurbished, et cetera, et cetera, and that was several years ago. We can have a two-lane, uh, refurbished and a two-lane, brand-new bridge. Or we can have a four-lane and a pedestrian. And so bringing on, uh, and so then I heard the rumors lieutenant governor said that he would take it on as a state park. So I asked, do you want me to call or do you wanna call when I was told about the rumor? They said, you call. I said, okay, I'll call him. So I did. And been talking to him about it ever since. And I have had conversations, uh, directly with Mayor Chandler, with Butch Ford, Mayor Perkins, Dr. Wilson at the Caddo Parish. And all thus far, everyone has committed verbally and most all have signed saying that they would move forward with this. Uh, what it takes to, for us to move forward to getting that four-lane bridge. Obviously, Mister Darby, you're absolutely correct. We've got a few more steps that we have to, uh, move forward with. But this is one of the first things that, um, has been asked for by the lieutenant governor to assume full liability of that Jimmy Davis Bridge. And, um, when the refurbishment of that bridge starts for a put linear bridge, linear park, state park, our four-lane bridge will be built. And I can't tell you what conversations will be had then. I would assume that additional more deep, as we get closer to that part, additional more detailed conversations will be had. Today, they're just looking for the partnership. Will you assist in this capacity? They didn't ask for liability issues, they asked for trash pickup. And I am, Mister Darby, I completely concur with you. I do a lot of partnerships myself, um, within the community amongst chambers and economic development agencies and all. And, um, we, we know that sometimes there can be some challenges in those areas, but we continue to work forward, uh, for our community. And I know that our South Bossier residents have been, uh, looking for this for a long time. Our goal is not at all to put any more additional dollar, um, uh, burden on the city or the parish. And I understand that there's some, um, some things that are gonna have to change around our brooch, Brookshire's grocery arena for these things to happen. And, um, and that's, and I am making the assumption because I've not, everybody tells me, I have a copy of it, but I'll send it to you, but I've still not seen it. But, um, that if it's a two-lane and a two-lane, there's still gonna be some appropriations and some things that are gonna have to happen either way. Again, we would like to see for our residents and for opportunity of economic development, growth and what have you, a brand-new, state-of-the-art four-lane bridge. And we're just asking you to support that.
Let me say this, Charles, you, Amanda, or Tommy, y'all was in on the call. So what he told us, Sean Wilson, that we accept liability, we accept maintenance. So this is petty compared to that, do we get, get an answer for that?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
When we was on a conference call with Sean Wilson.
With Doc, yes, sir.
We, the cities, municipalities accept maintenance and the liability.
Is what he's requesting.
Huh?
Is what he's requesting.
Well, that's what, that's what he said we would. Is that not what he said?
He, he did, 'cause at that time, there was no legal way for the lieutenant governor to take that on.
And so we've had, started this.
So that was the first roadblock is, can we get it to that point? 'Cause it, 'cause he did not seem convinced that that bill would pass the, the legislature. And so I think that's where he was speaking from, is this bill's not gonna pass, so we need to focus on the cities having the liability, which I think we all agree was, was not in the best interest of the city.
Not gonna happen.
But now that, now that that bill has passed, again, we're waiting for it to become law. But now, there's a, there's an avenue where we don't have that liability.
And if this does, becau- if it does, because we, who knows? We, this is one step to continue the conversations, to get a four-lane. And in the, um, meeting that we had with the lieutenant governor, he was like, do, and I think some of you were there, do you want a four-lane, is that what you want? And the answer was yes. So we all know, I think we're all in agreement that the four-lane bridge is what we want. So this is just one step to, uh, get there. If we, if and when we get to a state park, linear park, that brings in other entities as well. The Convention and Tourist Bureau, uh, is a big, 'cause it's a tourism attraction. So there's, there can be other players that we can work towards, uh, in the future. We just have to get these first steps started. And I know with, uh, Secretary Wilson giving us deadlines and all, we're fighting against, uh, inflation, prices going up. We know how that's all just hurting us in, in those, um, costs. So we're.
That's why, that's why, we can pass it today, we can wait till Thursday, the question haven't been answered yet. That's why I think this is ridiculous to, today, that we have to do it because there's not even been a decision, and there's so many decisions just to be made. Again, I'm okay to pass it today. Mister Darby wants to put a.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and that's still the question is, if we put an amendment on it, can we pass it Wednesday or Thursday? Or, does it gotta be reintroduced, being just a MOU? I would say we could pass it.
Technically, no. It would, it would be an amended, um, contract, legally speaking, um, that would have different language in it, which, uh, according to the city charter, a contract has to be passed by or, by ordinance. Um, and therefore, that requires a first reading and a second reading. And if you amend the contract.
Amend it today.
You can amend it today and you could do the first reading. Um, and then the written language could be added in there. And then I think you would still, I, I think you wait till the July 5th meeting to, for the, for the required time period for the second reading, between the first and the second reading.
And I completely appreciate what y'all are doing. So then my next question is, and I'd have to check with, um, Butch at the parish since, um, he's the one that's been kind of leading that charge to get all the signatures, is that, uh, when you add that language to it, then do each of those municipalities have to go back and say that they agree to that language? And are they gonna have to go through all of their?
I would say they can do what they want to. I mean, we adding it to.
Well, yes, sir.
Well, i- i- it's a memorandum of understanding. It's basically a pledge to commit to a more binding agreement, more detailed agreement in the future. That's what a memorandum of understanding is. So, again, I would defer, you know, to their legal counsel, Patrick Jackson at the police jury and so on and so forth. My opinion on that would be no. This is, this is our memorandum of un- understanding with these various entities. Um, and we're gonna add some language in there, basically to the effect of, um, you know, should, uh, any other party to this agreement fail to satisfy their obligations pursuant to this agreement in the future, that would give the city of Bossier City the right to withdraw from that agreement type of deal.
Thank you for that clarification.
Tell your buddies, Lisa.
There ain't gonna be no budget jumping, okay?
I know. I know.
So Mister President, I would like to give the motion to amend the MOU, this ordinance, number three. And therefore, the, uh, content be changed according to the attorney, uh, commutation that he just made.
And that, that would be considered the first reading of the new proposed ordinance and contract that can then, the second reading could be held on July 5th.
July 5th, it would advertise on July 13th, and the mayor could sign it on July 22nd.
Do, have, have the other three municipalities already signed, or the last one?
Well, I think someone didn't have to have a meeting, they just.
I, I know that the police jury, that, that, the, the police jury has executed it. I don't know about the city of Shreveport or Caddo Parish, uh, I just simply do not know. I would defer to Ms. Johnson, she would probably know better than I would.
Have they signed, Ms. Ms. Johnson?
The Caddo Commission has signed, 'cause I talked to them personally, so I know they have signed.
Yes, Caddo, uh, Parish Commission has signed. Uh, when I spoke to Mayor Perkins last week while I was at Baton Rouge, spoke to him on the phone, he indicated that he thought he had already signed it. So I communicated with Butch and he was gonna confirm and, and get all of that. So it's really, it's down to the, the two cities is what we're, we're waiting on. But Mayor Perkins had thought he had already, he was like, I know I've seen it and I signed it, but I, I'm not in the offices, I have to, I'm just trying to put it together so that then the lieutenant governor's office and the governor's office, I mean, the, uh, Secretary Wilson and Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungesser, Secretary Wilson can go, okay, this is your state park bridge, after we get this four-lane bridge, and here's our agreement. Just trying to move the steps forward. Thank you.
Mister, Mister Mayor, do you have an opinion?
I was just saying, you know, my opinion is tear the old thing down and stay with the new. You know, I've always wanted to do that in the first place. I've always wanted to do that from day one, but that's not, that's not on the table. So we gotta do what we gotta do. Uh, I just don't want the city to be liable, have the liability of the, uh, we, we, I, I, I think, I believe we can clean it up, but I don't want the liability of, of all that, so.
Well, if, I will say this, that if the bill passes, the governor signs it, it does not veto it. And if the lieutenant governor takes it, takes the legal requirements to take it into the state park system, once it, which is, that's a condition in the memorandum of understanding, then once that occurs, then the state of Louisiana, through the state park system, would be responsible for any type of liability issues associated with that bridge. Again, that process has to take place. And if it doesn't take place, then we have no agreement in principle with any other entities or DOTD or the state of Louisiana. But you're gonna have two state entities that this is going to depend on once all the local entities have signed off on. That's gonna be, uh, the state park system, I think, which is run through tourism.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and then, of course, the big one, the Department of Transportation and Development.
And we, we are talking about the, the, the linear park. Nothing will be stark construction on that until after the four-lane bridge is constructed. The Jimmy Davis Bridge.
That's correct.
With all the meetings that we have been in, and the question has been asked by me every single time, the Jimmy Davis Bridge will remain open and operational during the whole construction of the four-lane bridge until they get to a certain point that the Jimmy Davis Bridge traffic will have to be, you know, diverted around or something like that at that, at some point, I'm sure.
I would assume for liability issues, all the traffic would have to be moved off of that, moved to the four-lane bridge. Uh, Mister Darby, I've been given a copy of the MOU, I did not have it in front of me. Under the terms of agreement, and this may or may not satisfy you, under, uh, two A, mutual responsibilities, uh, the four local governing bodies, which we know who they are, agreed to work together in good faith to achieve their shared objective of day-to-day operations of the Jimmy Davis Bridge. Would the good, I, I, I understand, Mister Williams. But would that, for today, would that suffice and take care of your concerns for the future? Again, I understand it, what it means to partnership with other folks. I do it all the time and it's sometimes.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, uh, for pulling that information. And unfortunately, that would not pacify me.
Okay.
I think we need to do that amendment to this ordinance, and that's my motion. I think Mister President, you second.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's time for a vote.
And, and the motion that I have is to amend the MOU to add language that if any of the other entities do not meet their obligations, the city of Bossier would not be required to as well. Public comment on that.
Any comments from the audience? Any other comments from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries for the amendment. Now we would need a motion to reintroduce this ordinance as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comment? You got to.
Any more, any other comments from the audience? Any other comments from the council or mayor? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Mister Hammond, did yours come up?
No, no, there it comes now.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, new business.
Introducing ordinance appropriating the sum of ninety thousand dollars from the EMS Capital Contingency Fund for the purchase of EMS supplies for the new fire station in the East Bank District at the central station, first reading.
Sir Mayor, say it. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Uh, yeah, I've got one that was sent in by someone in my district. When the, um, when this fire station, um, was approved by the council, was this, um, was this ninety thousand dollars not taken into consideration that, that they, they would need supplies at this new fire station?
No, the fire station was just a fire station. EMS supplies, we had decided to add a, I don't wanna say golf cart, 'cause it may not be a golf cart, but we'll put it in the capital to respond in the East Bank District. If I run a fire truck through there, I shut the whole East Bank District down for an EMS call. The ambulance can still respond. Problem is, if I don't forget to take the AED, the Lucas device, the heads-up CPR, the rescue pod, any of that equipment needed to work a cardiac arrest, because my guys forgot to take it off one truck to the other, I think it's a liability issue. So you equip that golf cart the same way you equip that fire truck. We do the same thing here, we have a ladder truck, but we put our equipment on a sprint car. The Tahoe makes the EMS calls, so the big ladder truck doesn't have to. But if they're coming back from a fire and an EMS call comes in, I'd like to have the same equipment on that truck also, so I don't have to call a truck in from another district, just because I don't have the equipment on the truck. So that way, everything's fully equipped with the, everything you need to handle cardiac arrest.
Good, thank you, Brad. Chief.
Chief, what's, you got an opening day on that thing?
Uh, we're here in August, that week, August. We had some issues with the, the towers, uh, they put the power lines up when they expanded coal. We had some issues with the towers, they put the power lines up on the expanded Coleman, we weren't prepared for that, so we're working through that right now, getting FAA approval to get up over the power lines, to shoot to the tower at the parking garage, to get back to City Hall. So it's just some little things we'll work out.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the City of Bossier City by annexing approximately nine one, 9.122 acres adjacent to the current city limits via the, via South I-220 and West Innovation Drive boundaries, first reading.
Sir, mayor.
Second.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance approving the reapportionment of council districts for the City of Bossier City according to map two of 2022, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Question?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I need to step up.
Yes.
V.A. Eater Senior, 400 Columbia Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Can we delay this to get the additional information that, that I brought forth earlier? I don't believe we're in a time situation like some other parishes, where we have to make a decision on this map today, or this week, or this month. We don't have an upcoming election. I just think to give us time, to give the public time to review some of the additional information would be appropriate, especially when we're looking at the numbers.
So is there a date we have to have this done by?
Uh, it is one year prior to the election.
Okay. Counsel?
Yes, first reading.
Yeah, so we still got two more weeks of the next reading, so really, we don't have to delay it. Because I think, Gary, y'all can get together in a week. We will meet again till Ju-, July 5th.
What, what is your opinion, Mr. Attorney? Should we, is it appropriate to go ahead and vote on this today, since it requires two readings, or?
I, I think that opinion would be more appropriate in an executive session. I, I, these issues that we're dealing with here have possible threats of litigation, and I would not feel comfortable advising the council because it would fall into the purview of attorney-client privilege. So I would, I would think that this is a discussion that would need to be held in executive session with the council.
I make a motion, we delay it till. July 5th?
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Hold on. Don't, don't get excited. Mr. Hammond seconded?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Please cast your vote. There it goes.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one police records clerk from clerk three to clerk four status for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
Sir, mayor.
Second.
Uh, any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public works to confine two part-time kennel worker positions into one full-time position in the Animal Control Division, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Green Acres Place HOA, July 4th parade, July 4th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Elect a city council president effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
I'd like to make a motion that we elect Mr. Darby as city council president for the July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Elect a city council vice president effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion that we elect for the city council vice president effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, Mr. Jeffrey.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Yeah, no.
I'm well with you, Brian. Counsel, please cast your vote. Uh, reports.
Motion carries. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Finance Report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended May 31st, 2022. Page one is the revenue by fund report. The city's currently running 29% over budget. The emergency medical service fund revenue increased compared to May 2021 due to a larger ambulance alliance payment in the current year. Gaming revenue is consistent with prior year, and sales tax is up 12% compared to May 2021. Page two is the expenses by fund report. The city's currently 10% under budget. EMS fund expenses increased compared to May 2021 due to the larger ambulance alliance payment and transfer to the EMS Capital Projects Fund. The alternative fuel stations are over budget, but that revenue is as well at 189%. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously noted, sales tax revenue is up 12% compared to May 2021. Page four is the manning report. The city has six more employees than last month. The total employees as of month end is 664. This is 39 employees below the budgeted total of 703. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for May 2022 has decreased 15% compared to May 2021. Current year-to-date income has increased 34% over prior year and is 49% under budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, current net operating income is down 14%. Are there any questions?
Chief, you still working on your, you need to speak? I know you are. I saw what you did. I know you're working on it. Any questions, counsel? All right, let's see what we have here. Engineering.
Good afternoon again, counsel. Try to get y'all out of here fairly quickly. Go through our monthly update for the month of June. Still hovering at 104 million of ongoing design and construction, with a majority of that being actually in construction. Twelve projects in designer bid phase, 10 of them under construction, and 11 subdivisions going on. Same chart, we got a lot more green this time. We've had a couple of change orders hit, notably the LTRI, as well as, uh, no, I'm sorry, it's just LTRI. Had about 140-day add to that project along with that technology and communications package through Louisiana Tech to help them get under wraps. Carriageway Phase Two, we've got some concrete being poured there. They're right on schedule, showing them slightly behind, but pretty much on schedule, getting ready to, I believe Shed Road on the east side has been reopened up to the tracks. They're still working on the, on the west side of the tracks. Trying to get all that taken care of. Carriageway Pump Station, we have, with the help of Chief Zagon, we got water in, in the hole and got the pumps running and tested. Should be looking at closing this one out. They've got a couple of items remaining. Uh, some of their bigger items left is basically site paving. Everything else is just minor in comparison. East Bank Fire Station, it's really shaping up nice out there. They're, uh, working on finishes inside, and as Chief mentioned, we're working on some additional conflicts, but shouldn't take too long. I think we, right currently, we're sitting at an August 13th completion date. LTRI, as stated earlier, added about 140 days to their contract, which now puts them about 27 days ahead of schedule. Uh, it's, if you haven't been inside the building, it's really, really nice. It's something to see, something that we should be very proud to have inside Bossier City. The parking lot outside, we issued a substantial completion last Thursday, had the barricades moved this week, so this is now open, and it connects all the way back out to Benton Road. So if anybody wants to take the new route out, or in, whichever way you're coming, feel free. Uh, got a couple of punch list items to go, some trees to be planted, but we are complete with this project. Uh, private development going on. We still got, as mentioned earlier, 11 subdivisions. Turning dirt, pouring concrete, asphalt, water, sewer, storm drains. A lot of contractors are moving, taking advantage of the, the dry weather that we have. And then our list of projects in, in designer out to bid. Uh, some of the most notable ones being highway lighting Phase Two on 71 South. Should be having a pre-construction meeting set up sometime next week with the contractor, as well as we're going to put, give some invites to DOTD, make sure everything's taken care of on that end. Uh, we also had a pre-construction meeting on the Tinsley Drainage Basin improvements last week. Uh, contractors getting ready to move in on that as well. And another one that we get a lot of questions, Traffic Signal at Innovation in Swan Lake. We have that getting ready to send out to, for proposals, so we can get that under construction.
Is that bottom one down there, is that the one, uh, for Fuller Love, the lights there?
That's the, that's the Fuller Love one, yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question on Wade, what, what, what are they doing at the, in the west end of the football field at Bossier? They either digging a big hole or hauling it somewhere. I, I, I thought that was our property down there, wasn't it, Wade? We talked about that one time? Pass it on the other side of the tarp, the black tarp? They cleared it and digging, they're hauling it somewhere.
To the Spine Institute, is what I was going to say. I, I, I believe it's on the Spine Institute property, but I'll look into the new hospital that they're, I think they're.
For the swimming, is it a rehab pool?
Let me ask you something, Mr. Patrick.
Yes.
Can, can a contractor, um, do a change order based on the increase in fuel? Can they come before this council and say, because they had a contract that they entered into, but they did not consider the cost of fuel going up, and now they can ask for a change order?
It's a very.
Don't say yes, okay?
It, I'm going to say it depends on the situation and how the project was bid out. Typically, there are, with the way the contracts are done, especially through the city, is they have a timeframe, they have a window of, and items that they're supposed to complete inside that window, and that locks them into that. If additional work is added, or time is increased based on the client's request, that, client being the city, they can include that in that change order request. But to just arbitrarily come back and request increase in fuel, I'm going to also defer to the city attorney. I do not believe they can just come back and ask for the increase in fuel.
Do you, do you think that you would identify a hidden increase based on fuel? Like, you know, they ask for increases all the time, a change order all the time.
That's, that's correct.
Do you think you would be able to decipher that, if it's sort of hidden there, and?
It's, it's hard to prove.
Okay.
It's hard to prove. It's, it could be speculated, but it's very hard to prove. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's just something that, that crossed my mind, the, the high cost of fuel, and you know, we.
We're, we're seeing across the board, we've, we've requested some quotes on some parking lots for parks and rec, and we're, where we're normally seeing about 115, 120 dollars in asphalt per ton. We're seeing 210, 220 dollars a ton in asphalt. And so they're, they're making it up.
Yeah.
In some of the projects that are being bid now, trying to get on the back, from projects previous.
We hadn't seen the end of it.
We had not, I'll be sure of that.
Yeah, okay.
Any announcements? You sure, Mr. Mayor?
And, Mr. President, I have one other thing to say. I like to appreciate the council for their vote of confidence for 2023, 22, 23 presidency, and I appreciate it.
You know, y'all would do a good job.
I do what I can.
You're in a strict meeting, I know that. Meeting adjourned.
We, we have the public hearing Thursday at 2:00 P.M.
Yes, there is another public hearing Thursday at 2:00 P.M. here in the chambers. The maps are still over there, and the maps are on our website, council.